Do you need call to order? Roll call.
Mr. Alro.
Present.
Ms. Dallin.
Here.
Ms. Scottsdale.
Present.
Ms. Claudia.
Ms. Lomar.
Ms. Lino.
Here.
Ms. Raj.
Here.
Ms. Karen.
Here.
Here.
Please stand for the president's adjutant.
The president's adjutant is required of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one hundred thousand, and one people, for the reading of justice.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the middle report of education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by habit of date, time, and place there, posted in the Borough Hall and the Milford Public Library. Notices have been sent to the Record and the Twin Boroughs. The Board announces that under its long-standing policy, we will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individuals' background. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings of the Board are open to the public, and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking here. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked to not speak negatively or in grossly doing manner about any employee of the Board or a steward. Recommended action. I seek the motion to approve the minutes of July fifteen, twenty twenty-five. The goal set by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, and we are going to start off our meeting with a presentation from Mrs. Verlison regarding the international trip to Portugal and Spain.
Um, willing everybody to take the floor, uh, politely, uh, to show you where we were and what we did. The trip was really amazing. Uh, we started off, I'm going to speak first and then move to follow. Um, the trip starts with a flight delay and it's a little like, look, it's a very, uh, fast round between two flights. We made it from one flight to connect to flight within eight minutes. Thanks for being the pilot, because that was my probably fastest run. I missed it because of the different obstacles that we made it and that was the beginning of the trip. Lisbon, um, welcomed us with a heatwave and as you know, probably experienced it here, uh, we experienced it over there. Nothing was canceled. We still went outside and still proceeded through the entire itinerary and, uh, we just bought a lot of, uh, a lot of bottles of water, really. Um, on the plane, as I, as I asked students to sleep, they had very good sleep. So our first day was very, very long. Uh, we learned roots of the Portuguese, um, how they made the colonies, where they, where they went. Um, we recreated the sculptures, you will see the pictures. Uh, we saw all this monastery and we bought some like sweet stuff and all this, uh, Lisbon bakery. Uh, we learned how they received the famine after, uh, the big earthquake in Lisbon and we again tried to like recreate. I asked students like, can you recreate the same sculpture or the same figures, how they stand? So we did that. Uh, we saw statue of Christ, we climbed on a big ladder of Lisbon so to make, uh, great memories. Uh, we show all the tar, uh, skills that we learned in class, you will see. We learned that, uh, there are many, many, uh, buildings, uh, covered with the tiles over there. So they use it, uh, for insulation and they use it to save the paintings because it's hard to near to just wash it and continue to, to move on and preserve it. Uh, we saw a lot of peacocks, like littered, tons of peacocks. Uh, we attended the fado and flamenco shows. Fado was just a style of the music where, uh, of the Portugal, it's a traditional style, um, of singing. And flamenco evening, uh, you will see that all kids were again in flamenco class. So we learned how to do a few steps here and there. We fed the birds, the birds are always need to, to be fed. And, uh, my kids who showed, uh, great, uh, sense of friendship and humanity, I was very proud of that. Uh, we witnessed how Catholic mass and Jewish cultures were born together and the people were peacefully lived, uh, next to each other, uh, through the centuries. Uh, we visited chapel of bones and you will see that and on a, uh, arch on top, they said, uh, here we are, we're waiting for you. So all those bones were digged down from the graveyard and they created this, uh, this chapel and, uh, well, this is reminder to visitors that you have to live your life as a human to full, full his life. Uh, we visited many royal palaces, we saw the royal palace where, uh, demo fronts was filmed, like Portugal thing, were filmed. Uh, but at the end of, at the end of the trip, uh, I mean, kids are kids, we enjoyed the time of in school. There were two hotels in the pool, very, very well needed and, uh, nothing can beat Casey because even after good, like, to me, that was a very good, uh, portions of the dinner we went to, uh, we went to street, we went to, uh, little and, uh, we found the Casey and, uh, they changed their destination. Uh, before I'll show you that, um, slideshow, I want to say thank you to parents, first of all, for allowing me and helping me to get their kids. I want to thank, uh, few of the driver for bringing us in and out. I want to thank you guys because I'm in production, I wouldn't be able to take kids. And, uh, the travelers were great, my boys and two ladies were really, really exceptional. So I, I can't say a couple of words here and there, but, um, this is how we started. This is our group with parents and without parents. So this is my travelers this year, age sixteen, two, I believe thirteen, will need to sleep on the plane. Uh, this is the Lisbon. Everything was, uh, we did on pavement. So this is just, uh, culture and colors. This is the arch, they preserved everything, it's really fascinating. This is a street where we went on, hopped on a bus, that's the pool. It's really, really wild, like real east. This is the map and how we, uh, how the Portugal explorers went to the world and this is the actual sculpture where we try to recreate. And you will see two bowers are first, we're singing and then explorers. So slowly gradually explorer slide and get longer and longer. That's Lisbon. All this monastery and proceeding forward bakery. Here we go. It was very hot. This is what I meant by having on my head and this is what I meant that I will learn how to have once real down and then real down with the rest. This is the tower made, um, designed by the same engineer as the hours ago. Statue of Christ, similar to one in, uh, the, uh, towers. All of that, a ton of videos, a lot of videos. This is, uh, just snapshot from the fado evening and we went to Havana. It was a chapel of bones, visit, this is the home museum and, uh, we became, so everything, mostly with tiles, these are chapel of bones. All came to go. Free, very fast. But afterwards, like, uh, dancing was fun. This is Amarolic mini miniature of the city. And there is, you have to preserve. So you cannot, even if you want, you cannot paint your whole, uh, this is a product, so you feel that will be, like, what they said. This is the bill. There was a lot of tourists on the way, but we wore bombs and jets, luckily. So again, it's a different parts of, uh, for the moment. Different royal palaces, different places. This is the royal palace where the, um, demo front was. Um, this tricky part was, um, baby seat, my voice, because I can't trust them, they really never let me know. Always on time, always on track. Because they have a follow-up group, not without to another, or say goodbye to others to a guy. And to guys are very important, it's a big question, they, they're very accommodating with, uh, they're engaged, it's into learning, they can just give down something like facts or, uh, historical information. They gave, okay, you're going to do this, it's going to be that way, so we have to stay together, this and this and that, so it's what they're doing. Well, that was just a little map of the train. This is how people learn before, before they. That's what we did. What is another part of the train? And the architecture, uh, collaboration of. Okay, so we, uh, we have, uh, and, uh, from, uh, Simone, she got, has, uh, made by, uh, for, uh, they handed, I guess, they don't like. And Madrid was our last stop, we start with, uh, uh, full fado arena. Uh, royal palace. Then it goes down to Sinestra, so you will see bases of this palace and, uh, I mean, this is my, third or fourth time there, I'm still, I'm still like. Everything is natural, everything is preserved, everything is used, so the royal family is using, we, for example, you buy a ticket, you bought the ticket and that day you will come inside to find out to be there, everything closed for a while. That dinner. Yes, I couldn't, I cannot think, not make pictures. There isn't words that those five years has used, they are used. It's wrong. And this is our start and, uh, Madrid, we all be, uh, safe. Tell me there was the last stop and this is something I remember to miss. And boys, more boys, you will see what we bought and what we, so, uh, Jan, I want to work since we have to. If we go the version, the mask, the mask, the best, uh, way to, to make the sword, to make the, uh, the knife. This is the oldest, uh, since above. Yeah, there we go. They should have seen their faces. That's what they do. I can't paint. Okay, again, this is on me, I found it on the street. It was closed unfortunately, but he wanted to see her and he's coming in. Right, I guess, um, please can you read the case, some in the face more sculpture? What we need now. This is our food truck there. And last dinner, the good land, the good land, the good land, and the airport on the other side. Safely was, I hope, a lot of, um, a lot of information and a lot of memories and, uh, very good companionship. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have any questions? I know I told her earlier that I know someone who went on that trip and the parents were, they thought it was an excellent trip and well-run, so thank you for that too.
Yes, thank you very much.
Superintendent School Department, Nina Galasso.
Good evening, everyone, it's been a while. I'm going to start off with good news. Uh, we had this past year CUSAC coming, so that's like the government coming in, uh, to do an accountability check on us and it's pretty comprehensive and it's across, you know, five or six different days, they do everything from facilities to fiscal management, governance, operation, personnel, instruction and program. And I'm pleased to say that we came out as a high-performing district, so really happy, um, not only for the district, but I'm really thankful for my entire team because it was definitely a team effort, it's too big for any one person to take on. Um, you know, specifically, you know, Dr. Puchar and her team, um, the fiscal management, governance, operations, instruction and program, that's probably the longest with the county where it probably, I caught this, I had a second hat, we were there until like five or six o'clock, so it was, it was all day, all day, all day. Um, but we did really well, a hundred percent in fiscal management, governance, ninety-five percent operations, ninety-eight percent personnel, a hundred percent instruction and program. Uh, we got a hundred percent in everything except for based on test scores, you know, they give us points based on that, we still, we're high performance, we're eighty-four percent, so really happy with it. Um, again, big thank you to everyone, the central team, also the teachers that shipped in, uh, facilities with the facility walkthroughs, um, it's pretty comprehensive, you know, as Mr. Alro, he can testify, everything is. What we got dinged on ninety-eight percent was from one report from two thousand twenty-three, we just did not submit it on time and they went back two years to find it, so, yeah, so the fact that that's it, we're, we're in pretty good shape, so we were functioning very well. Um, under board action, I'd like to approve the July, August two thousand twenty-five HIV report, uh, the Milford High School, there's one HIV three, three, eight forms submitted, um, and one HIV, or that HIV is not forward for formal investigation, was handled as a code of conduct, was explained to parents, and we move forward with code of conduct violations. D E O Berkeley dips, there were zero three, three, eight forms submitted, uh, which we enjoy. I'd like to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six district and board goals, uh, real quick, the first goal for district is review and revise the school's district safety and security plan. The second one, enhance student attendance and engagement through implementation of proactive and consistent communication strategy that fosters shared understanding of attendance importance amongst students, families and staff. And third, develop and adopt a comprehensive three-year strategic financial plan. Board goals for twenty-five, twenty-six enable more effective board governance by enhancing consistent ongoing communication from committee to the board as a whole. Two, continued communication and community engagement and district planning towards facility upgrade, upgrade and three, enhance understandings and port of the district's academic, extracurricular and athletic programs. Under personnel, you know, I'd like the board to approve the following transfers, uh, there are three, Ms. Perez, Mr. Opinion, four, Ms. Nudson and Ms. Valente. I just want to thank them, you know, as we're always trying to navigate the changing, you know, educational landscape, fiscal landscape, uh, we need more resources and places and schools become like a second family, so transfers aren't taken lightly and we know they're transferring from one family and hopefully they adopt a new family, um, but I appreciate them, you know, making that sacrifice and, you know, the whole district is great, so I'm sure they'll be fine, but it is a change and I appreciate them, their willingness, you know, to make this change with a smile. Approval of the farm retirements, uh, Mary Ann Lynn, she serves as a paraprofessional since two thousand seventeen and she is retiring, so we congratulated her on her retirement, I wish her the best. We also have another one of the old guards retiring, uh, Mr. Greg Kelly, who started here in nineteen ninety-four, so I wasn't great. He's retired with over thirty years of service, you know, was a PE health and drivers education teacher. He coached, uh, numerous sports throughout the years, he finally won his, you know, cross-country league championship this past year, maybe that's why he's retiring, because he finally achieved the mountaintop, um, but also served, uh, a divided part of the union as well, uh, the Memorial Education Association, so we wish him luck, he's still around until December, um, so we will still see him, so please congratulate him. Um, approval of the extra pay positions, we have over fifty clubs being offered, elementary through high school, so we're constantly trying to encourage children to get involved in the clubs to increase the class numbers, the club numbers and just get involved in the school after the school, um, so please, you know, take a look at those clubs, if any interest you, you know, speak to teachers, principals and get involved. Approval of the reach teachers for twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, the reach program is how we conduct our gifted, our formal gifted and talented program, a zero period for school. Under finance facility, facility, uh, I just want to tell our transportation for a minute, I don't know if Dr. Kuchar is as well, uh, we are really looking at transportation across the board and one thing that Dr. Kuchar does a great job is partnering with other districts so we can share student transportation services, you know, with, uh, Dumont, Burdenfield, uh, DuPrestville, um, she helps us out and we scratch each other's backs. Approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six senior experience internship program is an internship program at the high school where twenty-five seniors, uh, partner with institutions around the surrounding area through Burton County Special Services and they, one day we go there and they serve in the capacity as, you know, an intern, so nursing services and, you know, engineer, architects, uh, wherever they bring them, uh, we had one person serving at the Vanson Park, um, the zoo, uh, they're all over the place and Burton County Special Service hooks that up, um, so twenty-five seniors will do that. Under athletics and co-curricular, uh, I'd just like to thank the volunteers for the fall two thousand twenty-five, you know, Chris Kuzin, Connor Hollis and Bernadette Durant. Uh, Chris and Connor are actually joining the Milford teaching squad, uh, we hired them as teachers, so we are very happy to have them and the fact that they're volunteering automatically means they're running them all immediately, which is what we're trying to see out of very young teachers, especially. Other news, uh, first installment of pole barn at D A O, D E O is complete and that is opening up a domino effect with some positive things. If you drive past a high school field and see some facility improvements down there, all those kind of ugly boxes in the far right corner have been removed and we're repurposing them, we get one to the town and two are being stored in another area by D E O where they're not so visible, but we can still store things and we're rebuilding the wall. I want to thank the DPW for really helping us out because when you go back there and see these huge concrete blocks, they had the machinery to do it and they spent two days doing, building it like Legos. Um, it really cleaned it up a lot back there, we're still not done, we want to power wash and paint, we have a, you know, a mural club, maybe they did a girl down there, but this conflict trying to improve it, we also put a new fence down there that was torn down by the flood, so having that pole barn helped us remove what was in that field house down there to get it up there to safer ground, so during a flood, we're not losing hundreds of thousands of dollars in equipment and then, um, that allowed us to be able to see boxes as well, so it cleans it up nicely down there, so I want to thank everybody for all of that. Completion of E S Y, we have an extensive extended school year program, it went to August eighth this year, sometimes I feel like the school year never ends, um, but the kids enjoyed it, it's, uh, for our special ed population, um, it is a monster program and I thank the teachers for doing that and, uh, Mrs. Warren for helping put that together. We had a lot of camps, we had varsity sports camps, uh, athletic preseason camps, marching band camp, Camp D E O, so again, it seems like school never ends, we just continue, but I want to thank all those camps, uh, sports kids have been working hard, um, with in their preseason, varsity sports camps, uh, Mr. Katiers runs that, it's really our teachers offering more engagement over the summer to our kids, which is great, it's like a really Milford-based thing. Um, marching band camp, I popped down there and they had a wet down of the fire engine, uh, not necessarily to do with band, but it's fun for the kids, makes them a handful experience, um, and then Camp D E O helps transition our middle schoolers. Uh, a couple of student internships have built that I was made aware of over the summer, we had Alicia Choi, um, completed her internship at the Met this summer, over three to four percent acceptance rate and she did so well going there, they actually made her a docent where she was giving tours of the Met, I mean, that's awesome. Jamie Lieback, uh, you know, she was in our musicals and the drama, uh, she did an internship for one of our old alumni, Matt Caprillion, who owns Dust, Dust Productions, which is a horror film thing, and she was actually creating horror masks, yes, they were gory and bloody, but really, really fascinating, interesting, you know, seeing these pictures and she's a tremendous artist and seeing where they can go with their talents, um, so right up her alley. And of course, you know, Lily Katrina, uh, finished her internship at Vanson Park this summer where she designed a habitat for an ocelot and they're going to use that design to recreate the ocelot habitat, so next year when you go to Vanson Park, the ocelot habitat, hopefully, when it's done, that's all Milford now. Um, the athletic sound system was installed this summer, courtesy of the Ed Foundation, so we want to thank them, it'd be a better experience for everyone. Uh, you know, Mrs. Cuero's here, it's going to be a better sound. be a better sound for the cheer team as well as the announcing for the graduation. Also football games, soccer, whatever you want to do with it. The athletic booster annual barbecue was great, very well attended. That shows the participation and the commitment to the kids. Other program enhancements, the music programs, we are enhancing by putting, making Berkeley and Gibbs have equitable music department, I guess you could say, where we're just basically taking the band and the strings and they're going to be equal at Gibbs and Berkeley, meaning the same face time with the teachers where they weren't equal in the past. So we felt it was necessary. So I thank the board for, you know, promoting that and helping that out. We have a recording studio or video broadcasting studio going to Gibbs. Thank you again to the ed foundation. They're making good use of their space. And the goal is to get a morning show maybe every Friday where the kids are producing it and they get to show it, you know, on Fridays. It's gonna take a little bit to launch it as they learn the program, getting it underway. But we are excited and we can thank the teachers and principals there who are coming up with this idea and wanting to do better and better for their kids and offering different, you know, experiences. Also the ed foundation for supporting that initiative. It would not be possible without them. As your upcoming events, new teacher orientation, Mrs. Dawson talked about, the first football game versus Bergenfield is tomorrow, this Thursday. The cheer team and the marching band will also be performing. Kickoff is at six o'clock. Cross-country soccer valuable to begin next week when we return to school. Wish them all luck. The tennis team as well. First day for teachers is nine, two. First day for students is nine, three. The reason why we only did one day, we're trying that because when you extrapolate that to the end of the school year, it just extends the school year into the twenties where right now we can possibly get out of the nineteenth. So why make everybody come back after weekend for just a Monday? So we are trying it. The middle school and high schools, easier adjustment. The elementary schools is very tough for them to adjust to one day because they go crazy, absolutely nuts, setting up all the nooks and crannies in their room where they're being good sports. And I know they'll be ready. First day for students is nine, three. Short sessions for students, nine, three and nine, four with PD in the afternoon. And then first responders, night of September eighteenth. A big focus this year is going to be on attendance. It's a district goal. So all the communications we made, newsletters. All the communications made for newsletters will focus on attendance. I'll be talking about board meetings. There's a lot of resources that I want to share. So that will be a goal for us. Anybody watching, just please bring your children to school all the time. That is it for me. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Okay. Assistant superintendent report, Lauren Dobsta.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Yesterday, we launched our new teacher orientation, which is three days. So today we wrapped up day two. And it consists of a series of sessions where teachers led by our new staff, led by members of our leadership team, covering everything from evaluations, classroom management, I N R S and five oh fours, an overview of special education, getting them connected to our networks and systems. Pretty jam packed days and then some time for our new staff members to spend in their new classrooms and offices. They also concluded today with a bus tour of the town, which was kind of ironic because we have a lot of former graduates joining the faculty this year and they probably already knew more than, than some of us did about the town. So it was a really nice opportunity. The rollout of our new statewide assessments for E L A and math will begin with a full field test. We are doing the N J S L A adaptive and N J G P A adaptive. So they are the same assessments. It's still New Jersey Student Learning Assessments and New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. However, there's now the word adaptive on it, which means that it is going to adapt to the student responses. We haven't received a lot of information, but it's kind of like trickling out. We did register for training. The field test is required of all districts with eligible students. So we will be participating. And the testing window for the field test is October twenty-seventh through November fourteenth. And there are some days where there will be no testing, but as we narrow down the window and actually schedule our test here, you will be, the parents will be notified with more information and details. On tonight's agenda, I want to draw your attention to C twenty-five, twenty-six. We're seeking approval for three internship. One is a student completing field service hours. One is a student teaching assignment. And then one of our faculty members is engaged in the leadership program and this is the required field service placement. Also, F twenty-five, twenty-six dot thirty-one, we're seeking approval to accept and then submit the fiscal year twenty-six E S E A grant, which means that we did receive funding in titles one, two, title three, title three immigrant and title four. So, you know, we're thrilled to receive this funding as it's essential to sustaining student support services as well as ongoing professional development for faculty.
And I know, I'm sorry, I dropped. We had a couple of questions about how it compared to last year in terms of the amount and in an age where they are cutting everything. And we were very nervous, number one, if we were gonna get it at all. And then number two, if we did get it, if it would be cut substantially because that would greatly affect us and?
Very much in line with what we were saying last year. So great things all around. We're very, very happy. So we're actually in the process of going through, based on spring performance, looking at all of our data and, you know, identifying our needs and then figuring out what our interventions and support fully and compiling it in the actual grant and submitting that. The testing for students is a new platform. I didn't mention that. The grant application this year is also a new platform. So it changes all around on N J D weeks. And finally, I just wanted to share that the New Jersey Department of Ed is offering a workshop for parents and caregivers to explore strategies that they can use to support children at home whose anxiety may present as oppositional behavior. So I'm seeing more and more offerings. This one is particularly for parents and caregivers. It's going to cover techniques such as relaxation, emotion coaching, differential attention and classroom specific interventions to foster positive emotional and behavioral outcomes. So it is a webinar. It is virtual. It is free. It will take place on November four, four thirty to six. And we're going to post that up on our website under announcements so that you can register if you're interested. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Mrs. Dawson, have you heard anything about regarding the field test? Are we gonna get any data?
As far as I know, the students are not going to receive scores. This is what I read in one of the most recent broadcasts. And it's really just for test questions. So that they're, you know, oftentimes before, when they're changing the assessment, they'll throw out some different question stems and use the student responses to then like the final tweaks on the assessment. So we shouldn't be receiving any reports on the field test. And I'm not sure how the adaptive, we're wondering how the adaptive assessment is going to compare to the historical N J S L A that we're accustomed to.
We have, we have a lot of questions that aren't answered. And I want to also point out that, you know, Mrs. Dawson being very gracious, they just let us know about these. Literally like a month ago. So, and this is a huge upheaval in terms of how they are testing. This is not a little, this is not a little change by any means. So traditional testing is you get a question, some are hard, some are easy, and you answer it. And, you know, depending on what level proficiency you are, you will answer the easier ones, the hard ones, whatever it is. This one, as Mrs. Dawson's explaining, is they'll give you a question. If you get it right or wrong, depends on the next question, level question of hardness you get or difficulty you get. So we don't know how that's going to translate to proficiency, how that's going to translate overall score to last year's scores, to the year before that's scores. Like, can we get a good trend analysis anymore? So this is a big, big deal that we are just kind of inheriting very, very quickly. I, I hadn't even heard of this really. And to thank you for agreeing, Tony, because we pride ourselves on keeping up to date on things. And it was just kind of like in one broadcast and it kind of, it was a shock.
Five o'clock in the afternoon.
It was a shock around the world.
So traditionally, we've been using Pearson, Pearson Access N A C S platform. And they're changing vendors. So there's a little bit of tie-up in the litigation side. And that's why there was a delay in the rollout and why we're notified so late. But we'll see. I have like a follow up to what you said. So is, this is really more what you think? You think this is in relation to the SATs changing to adaptive? Do they change to adaptive this year? This past year, there was adaptive testing. Possibly. A lot of the talking actually is adaptive. So it's not really something that we haven't seen. What I'm more like, I guess I'm more curious. Yeah, like, you know, New Jersey establishes cut scores and proficiency levels. So if it's adaptive, then how are we really truly able to gauge, right, performance on a great level expectations when you can go either way on that?
And I would say it's very much related because when you look at trends, once one big domino falls, it's like, who's gonna be the bravest? And then once that domino falls, they become the trend setter and then it becomes trending. Adaptive technology for tests have been around for a long, at least twelve to fifteen years. I mean, I remember doing them a long time ago. And it's interesting because sometimes it really frustrates the kids, you know, and other times it, it works really well. So it's hard to say, but I think it's definitely much in line with the trend and where education's going, especially with AI and what they can do now on the backend with building coding and platform. So it allows it to the bigger scale. And I think that's why we're starting to see this. But it's not a coincidence.
In a non-standardized way, it tells us where kids are at, right? Because on a regular or traditional assessment, it's just gonna tell us whether they hit the mark or not. But it's not really gonna tell us anything that allows us to teach them to where that student is really at. So it should be helpful. On another note, the parental notification of standardized assessments will be coming out soon. It has the assessment calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. It details all of the standardized assessments as well as local assessments that we're taking. There are links for sample tests, sample questions, parent resources, information about accommodations and testing windows in that. The, also the graduation pathways is on there that remain unchanged. I have a feeling that more information will be coming out later in the year, once they, we get through the field test for the N J G P A, because I anticipate that that's going to impact the cut scores for graduation readiness. Is there, since we're here with this and you have mentioned it, is there a change? I thought I heard it somewhere, so I could be wrong, to testing at the high school level? Certain testing being brought up?
So midterms and finals, yes. So we started developing them last year. We were starting to finalize them, work them over. That was one thing in the survey I put out when I first got here. A lot of parents responded that they would like midterms and finals back just to prepare their children for college where the first time ever they were getting hit with midterms and finals. And they were kind of, we don't know how to, we don't know the study. Like, it's a whole different approach, that swath of information that you have to prepare for. So then in my ways, I popped into classes, talked to students and one particular class, I brought up to AP students. And great conversation, you know, but I was like, yeah, we're thinking about, you know, how do you feel about bringing up midterms and finals? And half was like, yes. And half was like, no. And I was like, well, I, I think we're gonna push forward with it. Because sometimes you can't always do what you want to do. It's what we think you need. And we explain to them that how are we going to prepare you for the future? Like, that's our job. And they brought up anxiety, you know, I was like, it may, but you know, like, better get used to it now. Because obviously your AP classes, you don't want to go to college, like, get a little anxiety now if you're going to college when you're paying seventy, eighty thousand dollars to take that test. We want to prepare you for it. So this is not a sudden thing. I think all that theory, Mrs. Dawson, they started like looking at things and coordinating and common sum of assessments and, you know, we're gonna roll them out, you know, this year and the testing schedule will come out. It's gonna be a little old school, which I don't mind as we, you know, adapt to this. And we're bringing a little old school back, which I think is, which we think, we think is a good thing.
Yeah. And again, just because we were discussing testing, I thought it was interesting. So.
Business and Initiative Report, Stephanie Puchar.
Yes, exactly. It's like trouble over here. I'm like, that's. So part of my report, I was gonna talk about pole barn because.
We can talk about it again. I love it.
Yeah, I need to work. So now I gotta.
For those that are watching and listening, what you're talking about.
So right outside of D E O is a large structure. It's a pole barn and they built it in two days. It was incredible. They flattened the land and there is an apron there already. And so we don't have to pave the full way. There's a nice opening. Oh, we also got a bus that we're gonna park right outside. So we've got big plans with the pole barn. And they put up four poles, drilled it down, they made concrete, put up the four poles. There was no drilling, no equipment. They used the support beams to support the four poles. And then one guy would like throw up a, like, you know, those large, like, key things that have like a push in it? And you can have like, it's like a U, like a circle? And he would stick it on there and then they would hand him like the next piece of wood and then he'd staple the pieces together. And it took two days. It was incredible. But as they were building it and we were looking at it and we realized that we don't have enough space. So we've got phase two, which is on the agenda for approval tonight because the bigger plan is we have plows that have been stolen because they sit outside in the elements. Then we have issues when we go to plow for the first time because they've been rained on and what have you. And so we're gonna put them in there. We also have some equipment that's indoors in the maintenance shop that the guys use to, for various things that would be better served in one place. So we're gonna run a much more efficient operation with everything being stored in one place in the middle school, which is why we have a need to expand it out the back.
We didn't know we liked it so much. I mean, it's a, it's a really nice structure. It's clean, it's open, it's really nice. And it's gonna open up more space in the high school as well as we clean that up. And just so you know.
I'm so excited.
Just so you know as well, all the residents around there, we sent letters to alerting them. And then we actually went on to talk to them to see like, hey, you okay with this? Here's the future plan. What's going on? You know, we are gonna expand it a little bit. And they gave their feedback and they were very gracious. And they gave us some ideas, you know, of what they would like to see, like planting of trees and, you know, a sign here or there. And we accommodated them and planted four more trees.
What actually happened though, that did not give a story justice. He was on vacation for a couple of days. Never goes anywhere. And I was trying my best not to bother him. But I was like, if we don't get this on the schedule, we're gonna have a problem. I sent him an email. The day he got back, I was like, gotta go see the pole barn. Not big enough. That night, he's with the neighbors for like an hour and a half. And he comes in the next day. He's like, all right, we'll make it a little bit bigger, but we gotta get trees. I'm like, all right, like a couple little trees. He's like, no. Dogwoods and oaks.
So we tried her weeping willow, but we were told it wasn't wide enough for there, you know, because listen, we're, we're working.
Landscape big with a pole barn.
We're working with everybody. We're working with everybody. And listen, that's.
Yeah. We had the whole thing figured out. And then one other stipulation was we need a deer crossing sign.
He's like, gonna go camping in it too?
So just in case, you know, anyone's traveling down there, there's a lot of deer. We got a deer crossing sign. And the burrow is so great, they're gonna help us put up the sign. So now we got dogwoods. We just have to buy a sign. We got it. No, I'm saying, we just have to buy a sign. Someone else is going to put that. Yes.
As I was talking to the neighbors, I was like, all right, deer crossing sign. And like, I'm sure it's 12 deer. I was like, all right. Well, again, it's about, they were very gracious. They had a lot of questions. We talked for a while. But I think it's part of being, part of community, you know? And listening to people. And listen, they were totally, listen, we don't need your approval. But we want to work with you. And you know, how can we help out each other? And it was great conversations. I got to see one of my old students, which is a surprise, you know? It was great.
It's a chance for another internship. You can have August.
That's true.
Correct, correct.
And so the next day, we planted the trees. And as we're planting the trees, the deer have a little snack.
Yes.
On the said oaks and dogwoods. So, but don't worry, we got the deer scram. Turn a little around and they're gone.
Thanks. Thanks for sharing all of it.
It was corned up. Right?
It wasn't a big deal, you made it sound good.
It was not. And the important part was that we got four new trees for right shape. So.
For the someday for the deer.
Yeah, exactly. And then I know you've all heard about the red shipping container. That was a hot topic for a while. And that was then painted green. That is now all out of sight in the back along with the shipping containers that were down by the football field. Those have also been relocated to the back of the middle school. So now we have two 40 feet and one 20 foot C box back there for storage. And so one of the big things that we're planning on doing with the 20 foot is to the lumber for the spring musical will be stored there. So we're going to dedicate a C box to the musical for their props because they spend a lot of time building those sets and taking them down. And I think the middle school uses the wood. And so we're going to put it over there for that use. So we have plenty of storage. And then we, the borough, a huge thank you to them because they gave us a loader with a crew this past week. And they filled a wall down by where the C boxes were and it looked really great. A few picnic tables have been put there. We are going to pave a little bit where there's, it's not paved down there. And then in return, we gave them one of the C boxes. So it was a big collaboration moving the C boxes. And a huge thank you to the DPW and their crew and Brian and his crew for coordinating that. Aiden Liu is always a big topic around here. We have nine general education students who live remote from DA Owens Middle School. And those nine students are eligible for transportation. We have a couple corner stops in that vicinity where they take the bus. After looking at the software, we determined that two are not eligible. They're not actually remote. So now we have seven. Two of the seven, we're going to have a driver walk tomorrow because they may also not be remote, which will then leave us five remote students. And that's why we have Aiden Liu in the district, because we have remote students. This year, we have five non-public routes being done by vendors that were picked up through bidding. And then our buses are going to drive to Holy Angels and Macular Park. And that's at no cost to us because we triple-tiered our morning route. And then their dismissal is early enough. It's before our dismissal and any non, added district special education dismissal as well. So we're able to get them on our buses. We also have the typical joint transportation agreements that we've sort of been maintaining with the other districts. We also, we're having special services open. I don't believe the campus is opening for September though. I think it's opening in like October, right behind the tech. And so that is also on our tech run, those few students. So that's how we were able to absorb that. The Holy Angels and IHA stop is at the high school. It's early, it's before school starts, so we shouldn't have any issue there. The high school cafeteria windows and door project that was approved sometime in the spring will begin in about two weeks. And it will happen after school hours. And it should take about two weeks to complete the project. We received our extraordinary aid notice in early July. And we just received a re-notification of additional money. And so we got an additional $1,227 for extraordinary aid from the 2425. I also want to thank my office because I'm not sure that we've ever closed a budget before the school year started. And so we rolled over our software. And so the 2425 budget is closed. And we're now only working the 2526. And I think a huge part of that was in the past, we've used IDA funds for various purchases for special education. And this past year and moving forward, we're going to spend it only on added district tuition and figure out different ways to spend for supplies. But at the end of the year, we were, we were purchasing large amounts of materials for specialized with IDA funds and unable to close the budget. So in doing that, we're able to get things to the auditor more quickly. But that doesn't mean their timeline is going to be any quicker. And that concludes my report. Oh, wait, food services. We have a change at the elementary level for, for food services. So please be mindful of that. They're not doing that monthly order any longer. They're going to have their, each child is going to receive a badge that they're going to give in as they go through the line at both Berkeley and Gibbs.
Kindergarten will still preorder. Kindergarten will still preorder because they're so young. But everyone else, when the parent wants them to have lunch, they will say, you're buying lunch. Money will be on their account. They swipe their badge and that's it. And they order what they need to. And one other thing that's interesting, because it has to do with facility. We are purging everything, trying to clean up everything. So we started cleaning up the theater. There's little slot rooms in the theater that we started cleaning up. And we found a, the oldest telephone that I've ever seen. It is, it's crazy. We're going to actually save it and put it in this like historical room that we're creating. It is, it has to be the first main office phone from probably the 19, early 1930s. Where it's like a thing where you see on the old movie like Twilight Zone or something, where they pull out the cord and push it into another thing and you switch for it. And it has all the old people's names. Historical, historical people's names on it. Really, really neat. Along with that, we found like lithograph pictures of when the school was first built. So we always started with 1928. That's when the cornerstone was first laid. Opened up in 1929. There's a picture of it opening up. So really neat stuff as we clean out and purge. We don't find one of those every single decade. It's huge. The campus size and the table. That's it.
And you're okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any liaison board committee reports? Any correspondence? Okay. Open to the public for items on the agenda as outlined in New Milford Board of Education Bible 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. I seek a motion. Tony seconded by John, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose? Anyone from the public have any comments? Please state your name and town.
Little Page, New Milford. I just wanted to mention that once again, as I'm looking at the agenda, I see, and I know it was mentioned before, some former students and graduates from New Milford that are being hired for teaching positions. And it's just really nice to see that it just gives you more of a sense of community and family and what we really are here in New Milford. So thank you for that.
Yes, well, thank you. They're really excited watching them come back, like a new teacher orientation. Like I saw Stilios.
Yeah.
And he was popping around, he's like, I have goosebumps right now. And I'm like, well, just work hard. You know, but he's a good kid, you know? Yeah, if it works out, it works out. Listen, the best candidate, right? But being an alumni gets you in the door, but then you got to sell yourself. And these people are.
It's nice to see.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Okay. I seek a motion to close the public. Tony seconded by Andrew, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose? Board action. Having the recommendation of superintendent, I seek a motion for P 25-26 and .6, .7, .8. I need a second. Paige, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Educational programs and curriculum committee, Stephanie Kaufinger. She's out, so I will do it. I seek a motion for C 25-26, .6, .7, .8. I need a second, right? That's all, right?
Yeah.
I need a second. Cheryl, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Personnel. Having the recommendation of superintendent, I seek a motion for P 25-26, .15, .16, .17, .18, .19, .20, .21, .22.
Point two.
.23, .24, .25, .26, .27. I need a second. Tony, roll call.
Mr. Albro?
Yes.
Ms. Calderon?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Dunn?
Yes.
President Goldman?
Yes.
Okay. Finance and Facilities Committee, Cheryl Calderon.
I seek approval for F 25-26, .19, .20, .21, .22, .23, .24, .25, .26, .27, .28, .29, .30, .31, .32, .33, .34, .35, .36, .37, .38, .39, .40, .41, .42, .43, .44, .45, .46, and .47.
Need a second. Joe, all in favor? Oppose? Athletics Co-Curriculum Committee, Nicole Dunn.
I seek a motion for AC 25-26, .3.
Need a second. Paige, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Policy Committee, Anthony Albro.
Having the recommendation of the superintendent, hopefully in support of the board, we have second reading tonight of 12 policies and set regulations. So policy 2526, .2.
Need a second. John, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hey, any old business? Any new business? Paige?
So I'm going to try to do this by only reading. I did make copies, so you can hand off if anyone can. Did not know to look up, so. Dear members of the New Milford Board of Education. After careful thought and conversations with my family, I have made the difficult decision to resign from my position as the trustee of the New Milford Board of Education effective this evening. For 14 years, I have humbly and faithfully served this community as an elected volunteer. My personal obligations continue to require more of my time. And I'm unable to dedicate the hours I believe are necessary to continue to be an effective board member for the New Milford School District. I'm not going to read the rest of it because I have something for the public. So it kind of repeats it, so you all can read the rest. I just want to say to the community of New Milford, thank you for your support and trust that you have placed in me to represent you in the interest of your children. It has been an honor. It has been an honor and a privilege. My husband and I chose to buy our first home in New Milford in 2001 because it was a good location and we could afford it. We chose to stay in New Milford because we grew to love it and wanted to raise our children. Oh my God, I thought I would be. And wanted to raise our children here. When I decided to throw my hat in the ring as a write-in candidate in 2010, my children were eight, six, and four. There was work to be done. Seeds of innovative programs were sown, but the landscape and education was shifting. I saw what could be and wanted to be involved to ensure that it would be. I thought about going through a list of things I'm most proud of during my time on the board. It's a long list. It includes technology, infrastructure, district-wide security improvements, shared services with the borough and other school districts, capital improvement within budget, improved fields, roofing, HVAC, reduced energy costs, curriculum programs at all levels, growth in district services for our special needs population. Public education is again at a crossroads. Costs are rising, our aging infrastructure is in need of attention. Mandates and other related pressures are coming from many different directions. But the core of why we are here remains the same. It is about the children of this community and providing them an environment where they can feel safe to learn and grow to become the best versions of themselves. I am hoping that there is someone out there who believes what I believed when I started this journey and still believe today, that a strong community starts with a solid and strong school district. And that a solid and strong Board of Education can make a difference. In this community, our family has been blessed with friendships that have weathered life's storms and brought sunshine, sunshine into our lives. We know those friendships will continue for many years to come. I am not leaving New Milford. I will remain engaged in the community and continue to support the great things our public school district can offer to the children of New Milford. Thank you again for letting me be a part of that journey for many of you and your children. It has been an honor and a privilege. That's it.
Well, thank you, Paige. I mean, you've made a huge impact on the district as well as the community. And so your kids, so you know, it's hard to fill your shoes when you stepped down as president. I think you've made a huge contribution and it would be hard to replace you.
Can I read us in an applause for Mr. General? Now, I'm going to add, I imagine Laura said something. I'm going to add that I'm looking forward to the day when the board president asks for comment from the public. And I hear Paige Ryan 226 question. I'm looking forward to that day.
I'm going to hold her to three minutes. Stopwatch.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You always just say thank you.
Yes. You're the reason why I'm here.
Good or bad?
No, it's going to be different, but thank you for your time.
Even though I said I reject your resignation, not accepted. Just can't say that right now. So when we, me and Joe came on this board, it was contentious, obviously. We had a lot of that on Facebook and all those things. And not on the board and wasn't sure what to expect. And Paige and I went out for a drink. And we talked for hours and hours, I think it was like hours, hours, over drinks and food and all that. And though we didn't always agree, I think what we did always agree on was our intensity and our passion and just always having the community and the district and the children at the forefront. And just like Nicole, I mean, Paige is one of the big reasons why I'm here. So if you want someone to blame, it's Paige. But at every turn, no matter what we agreed on or disagreed on, she was a great. She is a great asset to me. I mean, having now been in negotiations, I mean, Paige was like my cheat sheet for a while, right? I would say, can I say this? Can I say that? Certificate is not a real word. I'd be like, yeah, it is. But it's truly such a big part of the community. It's a huge loss for us, but at the same time, again, rejected. I don't accept. But again, your legacy and everything you've taught everyone and kind of just thrown on all of us is something that I am grateful for and I think everyone else is grateful for.
I think, you go ahead. So I think that unfortunately, I was here a year and you were here as crossover. I think when you leave, I'm nervous because we're losing such institutional knowledge and a way of doing things and insight and. and being articulate and willing to share your opinion, even if it's a minority opinion sometimes. I think that's very, very important for just to spur conversation. I think you did it with dignity and I appreciate that. Big truce to part. Big truce to part.
Joe?
Yeah, so I'm going to start off by saying that I think right now Paige is probably a lot less concerned with what I'm going to say than she may have been for you. Pete, you hit the nail on the head when you talk about institutional knowledge. And that's, yeah, this is going to be a significant loss for all of us. I know especially when I was a new board member, you know, I would reach out to Paige often and ask her questions. And, you know, she was always incredibly resourceful, kind and giving answers. And so I thank you for that. And, you know, you've taught me a lot of this board. And I affectionately refer to Paige as the Queen of England because she protects the minority at all costs, right? That's, that's what New Milford School District means to Paige. Every angle that she looks at, at least from my, from my perspective, is, it's, it's, it's not intellectually dishonest. It's genuine. She's thinking about what's right, what's good for the kids, what's good for the school board. And so that's, that's what I will carry on for the rest of my time on this board. I will always try to emulate that and always be making sure that I am mindful of what is in the best interest of the town and the kids. So thank you very much and best wishes.
Thank you, Ryan.
I know, that's why she's leaving.
If you stand over here, it'd be fun.
I should have just pulled down the chair.
I'd like to just say something, Paige. Thank you. You're a tremendous person. You set a couple of different boards, you've been somebody grown from, from the ground up. Some I joined much later, you were, you were very involved in. Thanks for all of the guidance, all of the mentorship. I think very often the channel, it might enter Paige when I, when I, you know, come to decision time. I think you're a tremendous human. It's a huge loss for us. I think the biggest testament is how much you care about the community, but the real sort of, you know, concrete there is by, as with your children and how amazing they turned out. You did a tremendous job. You look at that. Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I'm a little emotional, but appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
I'm going. What do you need to? We need a phone call, we need a phone different a lot, so.
I'm really sorry you said that. Do, I just want to thank you all very much for everything you've done. And the teachers and the staff. I think I might have skipped over a little bit of that there when I didn't get to say that here in my, in something in my letter. But I really just want to say that the staff of the school district in New Milford, granted, I've not been anywhere else, but I am going to say that things that I've heard, it's just, it's just been wonderful. It really has. It's just been wonderful to be here, have my children go through here, but really to just see what they give. We just had a presentation. We, you know, we talked about, you're talking about all that they're going to do with, with the students, you know, with this, this recording studio. And these are all things that only come about because of the staff that really cares. So I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Any board member requests for additional information? Okay, I seek a motion to open to the public as outlined in the Milford Board of Education Bible 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. I need a second. Andrew, all in favor? Oppose? Anyone from the public? Counselor?
Thank you. Before I give an update, I have to, Paige, thank you for your dedication and your service. When I first came on council, you're one of the first people I spoke to. And you also meant for a man and gave me great advice on how to be a more effective public servant. Some things I remember you saying, always be prepared. We talk about institutional knowledge, you're walking an encyclopedia. You know everything about everything, not only that is going on with the school district, but the whole town and our whole community. That is beyond incredible. You talk about passionate heart. As was mentioned, your children aren't just future leaders, they're leaders now. They're leaders today because of you and how you raised them. Thank you for always serving our community, our town, our New Milford family, not just here on this one, but in all of ours, municipal lands and every way that you serve. I know I'm going to need you for more advice and more mentorship. So thank you and also congratulations on the next chapter. You deserve it. Thank you. I really, my only real update for the board tonight is it's always a privilege and honor every year because I never assumed it's a day to complete it, it's going to happen the next year. But we are confirmed for our seventh annual domestic violence awareness symposium on Wednesday, October 22nd at 6:30 PM in the Heisman Auditorium. It will again be open to the public and in person attendance and be livestreamed. And I can't, again, give enough credit, gratitude and appreciation to Mr. Dan Priest, who does a phenomenal job, each program with a livestream. And I don't think everyone fully understands the impact that Mr. Priest's work has, that I'll elucidate. We get feedback every year after our program. Not just from individuals in our community, but from the partnering agencies and our panelists. We get specific feedback from people who watch it online in particular, that they're able to see every panelist, they're able to hear every panelist clearly, the lighting is perfect, the audio is perfect. And again, it's not a day to complete, but these things are going to happen every year. There are programs around the state that occur where there are technical challenges. We never have to worry here in New Milford because of Dan's great work. So Dan, thank you. And thank you to your whole tech team. In preparing for this year's program, we as a community reached out. We reached out to judges of the judiciary. We reached out to school districts around Bourbon County. We talked to educators, we talked to teachers, we talked to parents, we talked to families. We wanted a topic that would be more relevant, not just to the intimate partner violence survivor community in general, but also to our youth. Because we partner with youth. We partner with our police department. So it should be relevant for all of us. And the theme that was brought to our attention was digital and social media abuse as a tool of cyber stalking, cyber harassment and other forms of intimate partner violence. It is especially concerning to hear from our prosecutor's office and our judiciary how there's use of Apple AirTag to track people in their parts. How people who have restraining orders against them will still view Instagram stories. And they make the argument, I didn't communicate, I merely looked at a story that was otherwise public. And then as a community, have to give advice to a survivor who says, every time this person abused my Instagram story, I feel trepidation, feel overwhelming anxiety, what should I do? These are the topics we're going to be discussing this year. As well as on the flip side, when an abuser restricts or prohibits a victim from accessing social media at all. As it further means of course, of control and isolation. So thank you again for your partnership. We have created for the first time for the purpose of information sharing and soliciting advice and feedback from our community and Instagram page dedicating you to the symposium. The handle is NoMoreViolence2025 on Instagram. We encourage people, message us suggestions, message us questions. We're going to be posting information in more detail about our participating panelists and agencies. The prosecutor's office has suggested, which is tremendous, adding individuals from their cyber crimes unit to this year's panel to talk in more depth and detail about some of these issues and concerns. Our lead agencies this year at our symposium roll course will be the prosecutor's office and Bourbon County Alternatives to Domestic Violence. And we're of course also going to have a presentation from the Milford Police Department. So I thank the school district, I thank this board of education, I thank you superintendent, I thank you, Mr. Priest, and I thank the Milford Police Department and all of our supporting agencies for their ongoing support. It's very rewarding. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I seek a motion to close to the public. Joe, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Close session. It is hereby moved that the Board of Education adjourned into executive session in accordance with the provisions of the section eight, of section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL, for the purpose of discussion and consideration of matters pertaining to the following subject, personnel matter. The minutes of the executive session will be available to the public and need for confidentiality no longer exist. I seek the motion to go into close. Andrew, seconded by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And we not be taking any action afterwards. Thank you, everyone.